I will call the regular meeting, Town Council, yes, Town Council meeting of May 5th, 2025 to order.
It's too early.
Yeah. If everyone could please stand and we're going to have Councilman Underwood lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. There is no presentations, there's no public hearing scheduled for this evening, so we can move to item three, that's right. It's been awhile since that's happened, but item three, minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Getteman.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 21st, 2025 regular meeting and the April 24th, 2025 special meeting.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, announcements and reports. Any announcements or reports this evening?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Some chamber news. The Chamber is having their 135th Annual Dinner on Wednesday, June 4th at 5:30 at the Bristol Event Center. Element 119 will be the Plainville Business, receiving the Community Business Award. The Chamber is also having their 34th Annual Golf Tournament on Monday, August 4th at Tonxus, and it starts 10:30 a.m. as registration. And the last thing is that on Thursday, June 26th, they're having their State of the Region, and this is at the Doubletree by Hilton. And there are leaders from our community who are going to be giving an update on this year's legislative session. And from our community, we will have our town manager there to speak, as well as our Senator Henry Martin, our state Senator Henry Martin, and our state representative Rebecca Martinez. And to register for these events, you can just go to the Chamber website to do that. That's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with any announcements or reports? All right, we can move on to item five, appointments and resignations. I don't believe there's anything in front of us. Is there any other appointments or reappointments that need to happen tonight?
Yes. Mr. Chair.
Councilman Getteman.
I'd like to make a, wait a minute.
No.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Daniel Angelillo and Joseph Katanzero to the Park and Rec Advisory Board.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anyone else with any reappointment tonight?
No.
All right, we can now move, I guess, to item seven, report of the town attorney. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to give a brief report. As you know, we had the charter revision, we had a workshop tonight with the commission and the council, and we're very close to wrapping up the commission's work. I think on Wednesday, we're going to have a meeting, we'll probably finalize what the recommendations are to get the report to the council. As you heard, there's only going to be one, actually, it's not Wednesday, I'm sorry, that's the fire department, wrong date, excuse me. We also have a charter revision, okay, it's two of them. As you heard, there's probably only going to be one recommendation with regard to an amendment to the charter, even though they do have another meeting, and we'll wait until the final, but that's the way it looks now. And then, also, I had a meeting today with the Assistant Town Manager, and we discussed the Fire Department Subcommittee and the recommendations that we're going to be making with regard to some changes to the ordinance and some other recommendations that we're going to be making on Wednesday, that we're going to be presenting, and that will be on the agenda. And I'm assuming that we're going to be wrapping up that work shortly also. So unless there's any questions, that's the total report I have.
All right. Any questions or comments for the town attorney this evening?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are up to item eight, report of the town manager. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have seven items that I'll go through and then hand off the last item, item eight happenings to Andy for his report. First item is the discussion on the possible repeal of ordinance Chapter 269, which is the massage establishments. We had talked about this, and it basically stems from a letter received from Attorney Galski requesting an appeal of a portion of Chapter 269 massage establishments. Attorney Galski represents a client who wants the Town Council to modify Chapter 269 of the municipal code to allow for massage establishments to be located within 500 feet of a public or private education facility, public library, structure, or building used for conducting religious services or any other massage establishment. So we're reviewing this request, and I've begun to meet internally with the town planner, myself, Andy, to evaluate the request and review the ordinance and possible modifications. Based on our preliminary review, it doesn't appear to be that simple or straightforward. So with all due respect, we're going to take a little bit of time to be thoughtful in our deliberation and come up with recommendations. So to that point, I'm going to also make effort to sit with the police chief and the director of the Health Department. They have input on this, they have actually a role in the process for any possible modification. So it's my goal to have a recommendation for the next meeting on May 19th, and, you know, because this is an ordinance, it would, you know, we need a public hearing to make any modification or appeal. And I think something interesting I just want to add to that came out of the Charter Revision Commission meeting, I think the chairman said that, you know, to place, like, ethics, or I forget which one it was, to place in one category or another in the charter or in the ordinance. I think it was with respect to the fire. And I think the same way for this particular chapter, it may come down to whether the council feels it's more appropriate to have, to leave it in the ordinance and to modify a portion of the ordinance, or to maybe remove it entirely to the regulations of P and Z. And I say that because currently, my understanding is that the ordinance does not allow for any appeal, and hence, I think we have this request from the attorney to move in that direction, whereas a regulation as could be written to allow for an appeal process. You could still, I think, keep that 500-foot distance requirement in there.
Yep.
But add in a, just one thought of many, because when we got into this discussion, it's not just, I think, the establishment, so to speak, but there are other businesses that may have a primary function and also have an ancillary massage service. So that's why it sort of gets complicated when you talk about, okay, what are we addressing here? And then there's the layer of the state certification or licensing, if you will, and that's where the Health Department comes in. So it's a few moving parts, but nothing that we can't, you know, get our arms around, and then we'll come up with some recommendations for the 19th.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, I think that it would be important for us to look at that question, does it, do we want this to remain in ordinance possibly with some changes, or do we want it to be sort of converted into planning and zoning? There are some similar things, for example, cannabis establishments, a very similar wording. But it would be helpful to know what the, sort of, the pros and cons would be of either keeping it as an ordinance or changing it to a planning and zoning regulation, what the pros and cons of both of those options would be.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But I certainly agree too that it's something we have to, we have to proceed very carefully with this, you know, and look at all the different aspects.
All right, anyone else with any comments or questions regarding this topic?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Maranti, and there's so many different types of establishments that it could be that would have, could have massage in there, or a situation like we had on Route 10 that got shut down. So I think we have to really be careful about how it's worded and what is allowed within, you know, schools and such, so, okay, thank you.
And just, you know, once we have a recommendation, say we have it on May 19th, you know, how quickly can we move forward with the public hearing? In theory, would that be like the first meeting in June? I know then we get into more of a summer schedule, but, you know, in theory, is this something that we could finish up before we're kind of on our summer schedule? Or something to think, keep in the back of our heads, because I'd hate for this to drag through the whole summer.
Yeah.
Just, I don't know, you know, with the request itself, if there's some sensitivity to how timing of this and...
There is.
There is, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I've heard from the owner, I've heard from the attorney so far. So I think, you know, at the 19th, you have additional information and move to set a public hearing for the meeting in June, because we're still having, probably the first meeting in June, obviously, I think would be helpful.
Yep, yes.
And then move from there.
Okay.
Because, well, I'll take guidance certainly from the attorney on, and I think, and the clerk as well, because of the publication, notification, lead times and so forth. I haven't gotten into that part, I'm just...
Correct, yeah.
At a higher level in terms of policy and not the timing of it, but we can go through that and kind of throw out a timeline.
Okay.
So the clerk and I just conferred on this, and if you set the hearing at the May date and then you have it in June, that gives us enough time.
Okay.
It would be like a three-week lag, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. Number two.
Item number two, that time of year where we talk about appointment of auditor, the Connecticut General Statutes, Section 7-396 and 4-232 require the appointing authority of any municipality audited agency or nonprofit agency to file with the Secretary of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management, OPM, the name of an independent auditor designated to conduct the audit. So there is an item under New Business to appoint Clifton Larson Allen to conduct an audit of the fiscal year 2025, so standard annual procedure for doing that.
Okay.
Item three, also annually, the 2025 Revenue Collector's Suspense List. According to Connecticut General Statute, Section 12-165, municipal suspense tax book, the collector of revenue with the approval of the Town Council may transfer accounts that are uncollected for various reasons and place them in suspense. So there is an item under New Business to approve the Revenue Collector's Suspense List. Item four, Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Update. I thought it, I think it'd be helpful, I came back this evening, based on conversations or comments from the last meeting, there may still be some uncertainty as to where various status of the three trail alignments, what their status is, so I kind of wanted to go through, walk that through, because I basically was trying to explain that our effort at this point is Phase Three, which is the phase in the middle, and what we call it the downtown section, if you will, but the heart and center of the town, and that Phase One and Phase Two designs are complete, and that we're really trying to connect two points. And so I thought, you know, the extra enlarged maps would help, and so Phase One, you know, is going to be constructed first, and it's coming from Southington, where we are here at the town line road, that will run along and through the wetlands all the way, as we've noted, to the parking lot there in Norton Park. That is, that is it, that is Phase One. So this is our town line, and that's Southington, we're trying to connect Southington with Farmington, right? So that's Phase One. It's designed, not likely that the state DOT is going to remove that alignment. So Phase Two is getting, you know, jumping over the middle section, where does Phase Two? Phase Two brings us in from the trail head that comes out of, the trail that comes out of Farmington, Northwest Drive, into and around the airport, which we just took the compensation for that piece, and then jumps and follows parallels, this is the old, what's now Element 119, but the Carlton Switch property, so, and follows in, gets us through the back end of their property, comes all the way here into Tomaso Nature Park, and then through our, and that's the path, and basically pops out at our road phase, comes through and around, and up here by Loop 72 where they will tunnel and connect on the other side. So that is it, and that's where Phase Three begins here, and will then connect us with Norton Park, so that is Phase Three. So that is, that is, you know, pretty much laid out, you know, properties being negotiated, taken, compensated, all of that laid out. One other additional piece I want to point out is this proposed parking lot here, and that's of no interest, because they're placing that proposed parking lot and then a, I call it, a spur trail to get you connected to the main trail. And that's significant, I want to talk about that, because up in, like I see, further down, we have another project that we're referring to as the Camp Street Project, right, which is a mill and repaving project there. The state, because we're getting the funds through a lots of program, that they want sidewalks there in the project. And so right now, we're trying to evaluate how to get, they want to get to the trail, right? So one option is further down 177, and the other is coming up Bradley Street and trying to connect, which is likely, at this point, leaning in that direction, but haven't made the final decision, but getting Bradley, Camp Street to use Bradley down 177 and connect to this lot there. And so it's not, it's something they fund, they don't tell the town that they have to fund it, but they believe that neighborhood, that's that area of town, because they're doing that safely, I mean, a lot, you know, public hearings will be forthcoming on that matter, and, you know, the residents in the area may or may not like it, you know, but that's what the state is proposing, because they're trying, I forget the, I'm sorry, I apologize, I forget the name, it's Smart Streets or Smart...
Complete.
Complete.
Complete Streets.
Sorry, Complete Streets, thank you. And that's just, it's a program they're trying to incorporate in any time they do milling and paving in terms of, you know, road programs that they're doing. So, yeah, I just want to, it's really just, it's connecting the dots, and so our focus and energy is in the middle of trying to get from Norton Park to, you know, 177, so that's all.
I have two things.
Go ahead.
On that map right there, where it says Perrin Road, that's Johnson Avenue.
Yes.
Oh. No, no, it's not. No, that's coming from Northwest Perrin, it's just the part of Perrin that has a couple of businesses, and a pit on the other side that belongs to the airport. So that's actually Perrin. Perrin goes farther than the residential area, and it connects Northwest Drive to Johnson.
Look at the sign. When you're, next time you're over there, take a look at the sign. I agree with you, but the sign that says Johnson.
Intersects with it.
Either way, it doesn't matter. That was just a, can you go back to the other picture? This map shows the trail going, taking a right just after the pool, and going in front of the parking lot, and using the existing road. That is not correct.
Yeah, that's, I think you're right. It's a, we had a lot of discussion around, around where this is going to terminate.
Yeah, it was, but the last, the last we were promised was it was going to go behind the parking lot, and they were going to shift the parking lot.
Yes, that, you're right, yeah. In addition, and also, even in the Phase Three portion, you know, again, there's been a lot of discuss, but you're right, that's going to be moved, but it's also, you know, not coming through the entire park up to 177.
Right.
That, at this point in time, subject to change, it could make a, coming up and make a left onto Hemingway, and/or even before Hemingway, if they decide to move it behind, off the street, behind the homes in the wetlands, then it would still be making...
Right. Well, yeah, my biggest...
A left turn and not coming out of the gate of Norton Park.
Right. My biggest thing is that not going in front of that parking lot, because there's way too many kids there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think they accept, I think DOT was amenable to moving that.
I just didn't know if this was something new they sent you.
No.
All right.
I think that's, no, that was just something I needed just for general layout of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Hurley.
I want to ask a question here.
Yeah.
You're not tending to run that out onto Hemingway Street, are you?
Well, that is one of the options. Hemingway, yes, coming out of Norton Park, up Hemingway, is one of the options they're looking at.
What happened to running it through the woods?
They looked at that alternative, they feel they're, I forget how they phrased it, but when they look at deep and Army Corps, that there's a reasonable alternative to doing that, or some phrase, like, don't quote me on that, but I think they explained it that way, that there is a road, or in this case, a local road wide enough to support in a safe way, doing the path in front on the street.
I don't, I don't think that neighborhood's prepared for this.
Oh, they, yeah.
They may respond that they don't. Personally, I would rather see it go through the woods.
Well, and I think they are coming, you know, the state is coming back to meet, to have like, I don't know if it's just an informational session with the neighborhood, but I think, did they say over the summer they were anticipating possibly coming back?
Right.
Because I do think there's going to be, you know, there is more discussion that needs to happen regarding how we get through Hemingway, and I think the residents in that neighborhood certainly want a chance to explain to the state why they think one alternative is better than another, so...
Viable.
Viable.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
And that...
Hold on one second.
I was just saying, and the Hemingway is part of Phase Three, which is the one that we're working on, which is obviously the most challenging, but that's the one that there has not been an approved design yet for, Dan.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman Underwood.
I agree with Mr. Hurley as far as going down Hemingway. I was opposed to going down South Washington Street because it would be in people's front yards, and I just can't see that. You know, my feeling is if, I don't want it in my front yard, I'd rather have it in my backyard, because as I back out, you're a threat to kids or adults on bicycles. But one of the problems that I've experienced, and I know you have, Chris, and Rosemary, and Deb Tompkins, a council's here for two years, we're talking about this now for two years, and if we don't make a decision on it this year, it goes to the next council. And of course, the next council's going to have objections to certain things that we're in favor of, and certain things we object to, they'll be objecting or in favor of it also. So I think it's important that we come up with some decisions for this council, because it's going to be handed over to the new council.
Yep.
But I do agree with Councilman Hurley, I'm opposed to anything that goes in somebody's front yard, especially when kids are using this thing. And I know that when you're backing out of your driveway, and you're going to cross over this thing, I mean, sometimes you're not thinking to look out for people, you're looking out for cars. So I feel that it's a threat to some of the kids or some of the adults who'll be using this. I believe they should go in the backyards, or go down to Redstone a little bit further and see if there's any backyards where it's all woods and a little drier. I know there's a water problem back there, Danny, I don't know if you've been back there, but we were, we were going to, at one time, look at the water situation, try to come up with a solution for the neighbors, and some of the neighbors were opposed to us being on their property, one neighbor, I think it was, but again, backyard, I agree with, just where it goes, I'm not really certain, but I think it's something we should decide before the next council.
Yeah, a question on Phase Two, and it's the, that, the extra part that you were talking about that the state is proposing. On Bradley Street, now, where, there's a proposed, that proposed parking lot, is that property that the state owns or the town owns, or that they would have to acquire?
No, it's, I believe it's, I think it's town-owned land already, yeah, that they want to put the parking lots. Yeah. Yeah, this is, if, yeah, that's the off ramp, so it's just adjacent to the off ramp parcel there, so, no use that we have for it, they want to make that, I think, with a bathroom there as well, is what I saw in the plans, so...
Yeah, they had, yeah, much earlier in the process, I know they had talked about that for, you know, somewhere in that area where it comes out on 72, yeah.
Yeah. The, that is, the Camp Street to Bradley sidewalk would be an alternative. What they had proposed was Camp Street all the way up to 177, and trying to cross there in front of the cemetery. And from conversations with the town engineer and a sidewalk that we did, it poses a lot more safety risks than coming over Bradley and coming to 177.
Yeah, in fact, when you come out of Camp, there's a no-left-turn sign because of the...
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, it is a dangerous, potentially dangerous spot, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
All right, well, I think that, you know, bottom line is, you know, we are very aware of Phase Three, and I think as we get towards the summer and the state comes back for that informational session, we'll certainly, we have some things to say to them, so we'll make sure we take advantage of that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Did this map that you're showing us is approved already?
The map that shows Phase One, Phase Two design is complete, yes.
That's, that's complete.
Now, I should, to Ben's point, it's an older map, right? So it's, that's not exact, we'll get, you know, if anybody is interested in the final design spec, then I'll get that out.
I would be. I definitely would be.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions regarding the bike trail? All right, item five.
Item five, a result on the all-day budget vote. Both the town and Board of Education budgets passed and the breakdown of numbers, the town, 494 yes to 428 no. On the Board of Education side, 509 yes to 408 no. A total of 925, 925 people voted out of 12,725 registered voters, equalling about a 7.3% turnout, so...
All right.
Relatively high, I think, Cindy, versus...
Between 4 and 6%.
Yeah.
On the higher end.
Okay.
Higher end.
Almost double the last year.
Yes.
All right.
And item six is the Financial Assistance Agreement with White Oak Redevelopment Project. Essentially, it's a revised paperwork to reflect the updates in the funding total that we have for the project. It's not new or additional funding, it's just what the state is looking for. Some are requesting the Town Council enter into a financial assistance agreement with DECD, have the town manager serve as the authorized representative. have the town manager serve as the authorized representative of the town, executing all documents moving forward. The document is part of a larger process to execute a financial assistance agreement with DECD, which will officially release all awarded funding and allow the town to seek reimbursement for eligible grant activities and costs. As a reminder, all eligible grant activities are reimbursable dating back to the original round 19 award date of June 14th, 2024. And the resolution, the number referenced is not to exceed a total of $2,564,500, and that is actually the cumulative funding award to the town for both round 13 and round 19. So this is just the paperwork catching up with DECD. So there is an item under New Business to adopt a resolution for a financial assistance agreement with DECD and the White Oak Redevelopment Project. Item seven is update on the town website. The town of Plainville's current website was established in 2015 and is hosted by Civic Plus, a widely-used website provider for municipalities across Connecticut and the country. Unfortunately, the platform we are currently using is being phased out and will no longer be supported, requiring us to transition to a new platform. After thorough staff research and review, we have decided to continue working with Civic Plus and transition to their Web Central platform. We have secured a generous discount on the initial setup fee and annual subscription. The setup cost will be approximately $6,818 with an annual subscription of $7,695 starting in year two. So one of the things, you know, Civic, they are a big, big, big player and, and rather robust in terms of the features that, that they offer. So we believe that the solution offers a reasonable price point and the best layout and functionality to serve the community. This website upgrade will also include a redesign of Plainville Public Library's website. We are collaborating closely with the library director, Jennifer Smith, and her staff on the project. In addition to the new website, we'll also be transitioning our domain to a .gov address as soon to be required by state law for all municipalities, so no longer the, you know, .coms or, or any other ending, domain endings. So I think that also will help in the search process when, when looking for our website. No actions required by the town council, just an informational point update, and we anticipate beginning the build-out of the new website this summer with a projected go-live date of 2025 and to early 2026. So I do want to thank Andy for all his research on this and the legwork on doing that. And Counselor Getteman had asked me earlier today about the functionality of the website and, and specific to communication and, you know, push notifications, which I think is a great suggestion. I think that's something we've got to go back to Civic Plus to see what that, what that looks like. Plus, I think the technology upgrades, one of the most important things I think happens is the mobile application, so that all, all design, web design, should have a, a seamless interface on mobile applications, because most people will be looking at our webpage on their phone, not on a desktop or laptop or an iPad. Just statistically, that's, that's what's happening. So Civic Plus is, is, is well-versed in that and the, in the programming to ma, to make that happen, so that we have the best user interface experience that we can have, and I think, I think we'll be, we'll be fine.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Michael, does the emergency broadcast go through that website?
We, we have a, it, it's a separate item, the, the Code Red is, is a, is an icon there, but it's a, it's a separate, it's a separate system, but it's something we, we integrate as a, as a, as a link, if you will, to red, Code Red, but a separate, separate item. But to, to may expand on that point, to, to Counselor Getteman's point, the push notification, so like, Code Red in terms of emergency notifications, right, you push it out to everyone within, you know, we can, we can block, we can circle, we can say this quadrant of town and so forth, there's an emergency, there's a, God forbid, emergency lockdown or something like that, or a gas leak or something like that, that we send out the notification. So hoping that we can have push-like capabilities on the website, we don't know yet, but, but that's where we're, we're going to seek information about doing that, because I think that would be great, rather than having to use Code Red, because we'd like, obviously, in a public safety emergency, you know, keeping that, that channel open and, and only using it for, for that. Whereas this could be a great supplement to that, to say, hey, there's a, you know, you want to sign up for, you know, a town-wide event, or like, like all-day budget vote, and you, you want a, you want a reminder, okay, you get that, or, you know, there's, there's a, you know, whatever, we're announcing a new policy, we changed the overnight parking ban, push notification. You want something that, you just want, maybe you, you know, the council changes an ordinance, you, you want a push notification. Okay. Whatever we can do to, you know, be more transparent and, and push more information, I think it's a fantastic suggestion, so appreciate that, Ben.
All right. Any comments or questions, or other comments or questions? All right, any questions just on the town manager's report in general before we move to happenings?
Can you?
Yes.
Can I get pictures of those maps? Oh, yeah, I have everything right here for you.
All right. Thank you. All right, time for happenings.
Time for happenings, all right. On Thursday, May 15th, at 6:30 PM, the Plainville Historical Society will be celebrating the publication of a new book on local history. Author and Plainville native Todd Jones will be doing a program on his new book titled "Plainville, Connecticut: A History." You can come and learn about his research, his insights, and the fascinating things about Plainville history. You are asked to register in advance by emailing plvhistorical@gmail.com. Books will be available for purchase and signing, but as always, there is no charge for Historical Society programs. From the Plainville Public Library and for all information on library programs, including registration, you can call the library at 860-793-1446, or visit www.planevillect.com/library. The annual Plainville Schools art exhibit is ongoing. It opened on Thursday of last week, and it'll be running through May 20th. You can visit the art exhibit during normal library business hours. Homeschool Hangout is on Tuesday, May 20th, from noon to 2:00 PM, and all ages are welcome. And the American Job Center will be onsite at the library on Wednesday, May 28th, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. That'll be to assist with residents looking to find jobs or for career help. There will be a Meet the New Library Director event. This is hosted by the Library Board of Trustees and Friends of the Library on Wednesday, May 28th at 6:00 PM. You can enjoy some light refreshments and meet with Jennifer Smith, the new library director. And from the Senior Center, and for, for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728, and all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The four o'clock flower sale is on Thursday, May 8th, and Friday, May 9th of this week at 9:00 AM. This is to commemorate the season by purchasing vibrant four o'clock flower plants to support the Pettit Family Foundation and the Plainville Library, they are $5 each. Caregiving Connections is on Tuesday, May 13th at 10:00 AM. Connect with other caregivers at the Senior Center to support one another on the journey to recognize the challenges and frustrations of 24/7 caregiving. And finally, the Vision Support Group will be meeting on Tuesday, May 27th, at 10:30 AM. For those with low, no, low vision, no vision, or anything in between, you can join the session hosted by David Ferland, the Orientation and Mobility Specialist from Connecticut Aging and Disability Services. And that is all I have today.
All right, thank you very much. Before we move on, any questions or comments from the town manager or the assistant town manager? All right, thank you very much. We can move to item nine, public comment. At this point in the meeting, anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. The first ring means that you have about 30 seconds left, the second ring will mean that your time has run out. Mr. Kislik.
John Kislik, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. You keep adding to my agenda. Marilyn couldn't be here tonight, so she wanted me to give the town manager a tip. Very nice house, came on the market, 130 Trumbull Avenue, right next door to the one I renovated. Four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bed, two-car garage, it's in the estate of Robert Finn, a former town sanitarian. Real nice neighborhood. And the other thing, ethics, you mentioned that tonight. If you look at the requirements to be on ethics, I don't think you'll find too many people. They'd have to be completely unique and different kind of person to make them requirements. It's really, really almost impossible. The other thing, I get confused on people that seem to be happy when the budget passed. It's like they're celebrating that their taxes got increased, and it's like they won a, an election or something. It just has me baffled. I don't, I don't understand it. Now, when I left voting, about 5:00, 5:20, it got to Washington Street, and the traffic was backed up there, there was a school bus that just made it through the intersection onto West Main. And I'm saying this because of the trail, that until that road, Washington Street moves, it could actually block all three other roads. Just, just a, a point about that thing. Now, some of you know I was at voting for 10 hours. I was collecting signatures and campaigning. Thank a lot of you. And Marilyn helped me, we got my signatures, we turned them into Cindy, so I will be on the ballot with whoever's on the council in November. I know the odds against me are really, really big, but this council upset a lot of people with the town manager's residency and at the senior center, so, so there's a remote chance. And the other thing, you know, everybody on this council, I believe, I probably voted for one of you, each of you at least one time, I even wrote letters, and it would be really nice if you would reciprocate and vote for me when I run for town council. It would be really appreciated. And the other thing on the town manager's residency, you know, it means that the town manager will not have the opportunity to vote for me for council. He's not a resident, and I feel bad about that. Anyway, you guys have a great rest of your night. Thank you.
Could I just, since you do, I just, the senior, you mentioned the senior center about something we did to the senior center. What did we do to the senior center?
You closed them down on Friday till they came out here en masse and embarrassed you.
But you know, that was the previous council that did that, not this current council. I just want to make sure I.
Well, some of you were on that council.
No, I, I was, no, I'm just, I, I wasn't sure if there was something else you were referring to, I just want to make that clear, that it was the previous council, but.
But you were the leader.
Well, I would, I would think there's at least two people that would disagree with that statement, that I was the leader of the previous council, but.
You're right, you're right.
But no, I just want to clarify, I, I was, make sure that there wasn't something that you, I, I just want to know what the senior center issue was, but I understand.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One Friday.
All right. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name is Rizwan Mumtaz of 6 Harvest Lane, and my attorney has written an application for the ordinance, and maybe I was late, I don't know if it was discussed today.
It was.
Okay.
It was discussed, yes. I, I don't know if you have any specific questions, we are in the process, I mean, I could give you a summary. You know, we are having town staff, there are several different areas within the town we need to take a look at the ordinance and what changes we want to make, including the health director, I forget, the police chief needs to weigh in. So our plan right now is to have that information for the May 19th meeting, and our, if things continue to move the way we think they will, we will have a public hearing in, on June, June 2nd, I don't know what the first Monday is in June, June 2nd, and keep this moving.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Anyone else wish to address the council? Yes, Ms. Loria.
May I, may I approach to hand these out, please?
Sure, yes.
Thank you very much.
And just name and address, please.
Yes, of course. Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. A quick question to you, Mr. Chairman. On March 3rd, there was a presentation by the DOT regarding what they want to change on Hemingway Street for the trail. Many people from Hemingway Street came to that presentation. After the presentation, people went out in the hallway with the DOT to ask questions and get answers. My question to you is, did you ever get a summary of that with questions and the answers they gave these people?
I did not.
Did anyone in the town council receive that?
No.
Thank you.
I do have a but in there, though, as well, it just, the, the state is planning on coming and doing a public information session with the neighborhood, obviously, but anyone else who wants to be there sometime in the summer. We don't have a date yet, they haven't given us a date, but there is supposed to be a specific meeting set up just for people who want to ask questions and get answers.
As Mr. Underwood alluded to, about this going on for quite some time, all these meetings should be taped for everyone to hear and see. The fact that they went out there and, and did it behind the scenes, not in front of you when you're making those final decisions, is wrong. It does not matter if it's.
I would agree, yeah.
And, and the fact that they still have not followed up with a summary of what was discussed and the answers that were given should be a concern to every single one of you up here. Many people, the reason why I gave you this is because Andy has been kind enough to correspond back and forth with the DOT. I sincerely hope you received copies of this previously. If you didn't, we need to find out why. Many people have been under the illusion with this, is that we have to do this a certain way. According to this, I posed three questions to them. What are the requirements, what are the limitations, and what are the consequences if we don't follow the first two? Well, as you can tell by reading this, we don't have any consequences. We can do whatever we need to do. And if you don't believe that, every time we see a screen, there's something different on it regarding this trail. This needs to stop. Councilman Underwood alluded earlier, saying we have to decide, because you change every two years. I have an idea. How about we all step up and be the leaders you said you wanted to be when we put you in this seat? And vote no tonight. Plain and simple, force it back, then find out exactly what's going on and exactly what we have to do. I know my time is up, and I would just like to end by saying, thank you, Councilman Hurley, for stepping up and being that leader at the last town council meeting. People heard $200,000 that we were going to get. What folks didn't realize is it's a lot less than that. For example, just coming up next week, part of that money is going to be used to take property on Jude Road, which is what's going on here. This is why I'm saying to you, just stop it. And if you don't believe me, all you had to do was look in the newspaper. It's on the last page of the, the Plainville Citizen that went out. It's right there, it's numbers one and three, Jude Road. Planning and zoning is going to be doing this next week, on the 12th. Please take a look at that. So take the time, just vote no on this, force it back. We don't have any consequences for what's going on. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. And stop tying your hands by, by, by force, having them force you to vote for something that's going to be constantly changed. If it's going to be changed, let's do it the way it should be done. If it's going to be changed, let's do it the way it should be done, and not taking people's property and doing the zigzagging. Let's not forget, this trail started at fifteen million dollars. It's now more than doubled, which is why they have to get more money, at forty-two million. That's absurd. That's almost as much as the Board of Education bu, budget that was voted on last week. Think about that. Thank you again, Councilman Hurley.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, yes.
Um, just, just for a point of correction, Roberta, it's on the thirteenth next week, it's not on the twelfth. You're welcome, Tuesday night.
All right, is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. We have no old business to act on tonight, we can go to item eleven, new business. Item one.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to appoint the firm of Clifton Larson Allen to conduct an audit for the town of Plainville's two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I apologize, but I just wanted to let the council know that our revenue collector, Christine Bula, is here, and if you have any questions on this, certainly, feel free to ask them questions.
All right. Councilman Underwood.
Motion to approve the revenue collector's suspense list.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any comments, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So the, the suspense list goes to the collection agency now?
Here, I, I'm going to have, I'm sorry to make you stand up and come over, but yes, if, just so we have you on.
What's the process?
Um, the process is for me to come up with the list of the uncollectible items. I can still send them to the collection agency tax serve, so we still can collect on them. It's just something that I don't believe that we will be able to collect on.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number three.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to adopt the following resolution. Whereas pursuant to CGS Section three-two-dash-seven-six-three, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects, and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Plainville make an application to the state for two-million-five-hundred-sixty-four-thousand, five-hundred dollars in order to undertake the for, former White Oak remediation and redevelopment at one and sixty-three West Main Street and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town council, number one, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance opposed by CGS Section three-two-dash-seven-six-three, number two, that the filing of the application for state financial assistance by town of Plainville in the amount not to exceed two-million-five-hundred-sixty-four-thousand-and-five-hundred dollars is hereby approved, and that Michael T. Paulus, Plainville Town Manager, is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decision, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Plainville.
All right, motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I just have one question, is this money, is that for, to fix the facade of the building? Is that what it is for?
Well, it's in total, total project cost, so a lot of the remediation costs involved in this, and the, we're still working on a plan for the facade, and that'll be incorporated into the, into the total project.
Into this, and included in this money?
These allocations.
What else is it including, though? Because I thought we had already cleaned the soil and.
No, 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 this, the, the interior has, has been gutted, but the exterior soil remediation is the next phase, and so that's where the bulk of this money is going toward.
All right, thank you.
And hopefully, I, I'm trying to get a, a better handle on the, on the timing and such, that, there was a glitch with respect to the, um, the, no, no, the, the flooding issues and the flood maps, the, the revisions they made to the state flood maps and so forth. So elevations are, are, are an issue as, obviously, in the back of the property, so they're trying to work out the elevation with, with the state and with respect to the hundred-year, you know, flood and, and all of those things that they're trying to do. So I'm trying to get a better idea in terms of when we think they'll actually get shovels in the ground for remediation, which I hope is later this, this year. So trying to get a, trying to get a feel for that.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, is there a start date yet for the?
Not, I do not, I do not have that yet, no. I'm work, I'm working with, trying to get a, a date on that.
All right, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number four.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the tax refunds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes care of new business, is there any other discussions of interest tonight? All right. Hearing no one, we can actually move to the last item, adjournment.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, and we'll see everyone in two weeks on the nineteenth.